I'm in. The time is 9:09. Board is now reconvened in open session. We'll first consider action on our closed-session items. Mrs. Tosan?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. I move to terminate Stephanie Williams' probationary employment contract for good cause and to authorize the superintendent or his designee to notify Ms. Williams of this action in accordance with applicable law and policy.
Second.
We have a motion by Mrs. Tosan and a second by Mr. Verdean. Do we have discussion? Hearing none, please vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. That's the only one. Our next item is information on safety and security. Dr. Dupree.
On our safety and security update.
Yes, thank you for giving me the opportunity to provide this brief report. The members of the Fort Ben ISD Police Department are committed to ensuring the safety and security of our students and our staff throughout the school year. And I'd also like to say, in addition, our partner law enforcement agencies are just as committed to providing a safe school environment for us. We continually monitor local and global events so that we're aware of any potential threats or actual threats to our campuses, but we also take proactive measures at our campuses and our facilities to provide a safe learning environment. Today, we're going to focus on three of those components: safety strategies, training, and communication. In an effort to make our schools more secure, a safety and security master plan was developed in 2014 as an all-hazards approach to safety. Industry best practices were identified, and we used four interrelated elements to construct that plan. Those were infrastructure, crisis communication and notification, staffing, and procedures. The plan was presented to the community through public meetings. A video presentation was posted on the Fort Ben ISD website. Feedback from the community was gathered and evaluated, and then the plan was brought to the board for approval in July of 2014. From that plan, specific strategies were identified, excuse me, as needing immediate attention in the 2014 bond initiative. The following strategies were passed by voters in November of 2014. Twenty-six point nine million dollars for safety and security was approved. Out of that, we are constructing security vestibules at every single campus and improving the security vestibules that are already in place at some campuses: impact-resistant window film, security camera system upgrades, video intercoms, increased card access points for employees, and emergency generators. Also from the safety and security master plan, we've had additional implementations that were not part of the bond. For instance, we've implemented school bus cameras, global positioning systems on our police vehicles and white fleet. We're about to start putting the police vehicle GPS systems on in about a week or two. Two-way radio replacement for police and transportation so that we can communicate with our partner law enforcement agencies. We've created an emergency management coordinator position. This emergency management coordinator is responsible for all of the emergency operation plans and all the related training for every single campus. We've also implemented a life safety systems manager. This person is responsible for all the intrusion alarm systems, all the fire alarm systems, fire extinguishers, sprinkler systems, access control points, and security camera systems. We've also incorporated an emergency management liaison position. This is a person at each campus who was an existing employee, and they will assist the emergency management coordinator in making sure emergency preparedness procedures are carried out on each campus. We move into training. For staff and students, we believe that training, not just our officers, but our staff and students, is a key component to the success of our campuses. The emergency management coordinator, the life safety systems manager, and myself all present tabletop exercises at our monthly collaborative culture meetings, or C squared. These meetings are held on one Thursday of each month for all the principals and all the director-level positions in the district. We've also implemented the standard response protocol. This is a nationwide initiative to present consistent, clear, and shared language and actions to all students, staff, and first responders. There are only four words that everybody needs to know, and it's lockout, lockdown, evacuate, and shelter in place. We feel that the goal is to learn these terms and actions, and then, once used, the students will use those same actions throughout their entire educational career in Fort Ben. The standard response protocol was actually a portion of the staff training in the summer of 2015 as well. We have our emergency management coordinator and an officer are also available to conduct tabletop exercises on active shooter scenarios at campuses when the campuses request that. Each campus is required to do two tabletop scenarios a year, and so we make that available to them as an option, in addition to the lockdown drills that they're required to do once a semester as well. So the combination of doing those lockdown drills and the tabletops prove to be very When we talk about training for police officers, my standards are pretty high, and I want the best-trained officers around. So the Texas Commission on Law Enforcement, or TCOE, is our licensing agency. I'll tell you that they only require 20 hours a year to maintain a peace officer license. Our Fort Ben ISD police officers train 80 hours a year minimum. We provide two weeks of training every single summer, so we quadruple the number of training hours for every officer that's required by the state. We've also certified every single officer in our department in a mental health officer certification program. Everyone is designated as a mental health officer. This allows them to, this is a 40-hour class, and allows them to recognize mental health behavior indicators, communication techniques, and resource opportunities for those who may be in distress. We have taken advanced law enforcement rapid-response training. The acronym is ALERT, and this is a center out of San Marcos. This training was designed after Columbine High School. This training is designed to teach officers and first responders how to quickly form a team in case of an active shooter and go in and stop the threat without having to wait on a SWAT team. Each one of our officers have been through the training. We put the training on every single summer, and so every officer that comes through our doors will get that training every summer. We feel like that is a necessary training for us. We're also just started a school-based law enforcement training curriculum today, as a matter of fact. This is a mandated 20-hour training course that came out of House Bill 2684 out of this last legislative session. All police officers who work in a school setting where a district has a student population of 30,000 students or more, and the officers work in a school, they're required to take this training before June 1st of 2016. We asked for a waiver to be able to extend to the summertime, and we were told no. So, starting today, we will put this training on for eight consecutive weeks, and we will pull four or five officers, of our own officers, to get them certified in this training. But we've also extended this training opportunity to other departments, and in this first training class, we've had Katy ISD officers in the training. We'll have Sheriff's Department officers, and we'll possibly have some other local agencies join in. This training teaches officers how to recognize health crisis intervention techniques, de-escalation techniques, and restorative justice. So we feel like it's a great training opportunity. And we collaborate our training efforts with other agencies in the area. We frequently train with Sugar Land, the Sheriff's Department, Missouri City, Stafford, and other agencies in the area. Communication is the third piece that I want to talk about, and I send a monthly safety message to over 100,000 email users. And these messages range in topic, but they're always remind our community to take an active role in keeping our students safe. We want to constantly remind people of that. We're also looking for communication strategies specifically to reach our student population on a new campaign that's called See Something, Say Something. This campaign, we're looking at starting, it would be used in conjunction with Crime Stoppers, but we've already been working with a couple of teachers on a poster project and to incorporate Crime Stoppers with that, and we're talking about using a video message to students as well to reach a secondary campus. And so during an advisory period or something like that, we would run a video of the police and remind them to, if they see something that looks suspicious or out of place at their school, to say something. And then we give them a resource to do that anonymously. Safety is our top priority. We say that on every communication, and we firmly believe that. And just like Dr. Dupree said earlier, building relationships is the key to that. And I think we've worked hard over the last six years that I've been here to build relationships with our agency partners and with our district partners and all of our stakeholders, and we're going to continue to do that.
Thank you, Chief, very much. Thanks for sharing that information with us because safety is a priority for us as well. Do we have any comments or questions from any of the trustees?
I have one question. There's a lot of studies shows body cam can save a lot of problems, and we all have wonderful officers, and is that part of any of this discussion here?
Absolutely. Body cams are, actually, we've had those discussions recently. We're working on a way to fund those. We've already tested a couple of body cam vendors, and we've looked at storage opportunities for that because there's quite a bit of storage that goes with that and then recovering that storage. But we are exploring funding opportunities for that.
Thank you. All right. Do we have any other comments or questions? All right. Well, thank you very much. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Next item is, we're on to the review items, I guess, and that is reviewing board policies. The first one on the list is CV Local, which has been revised since it was emailed to us. So we have a new version at our places, and we have a slide, it looks like, to explain it to us. Is that right?
Yeah, Rick's going to talk.
Mr. Morris, are you going to explain? So just let me set the stage here, and if we look on pages two and three of this policy, this is where, this is the portion of the policy that is being revised, and this was previously entitled Change Orders, and the one that was emailed out to us, and I think that they've changed some language and set it up a little bit differently. So, Mr. Morris, can you explain to us what we've got?
I can. Good evening, Madam Board, President, members of the Board, and Dr. Dupree. We're here tonight to discuss proposed revisions to your construction facilities policy designated CV Local. There are two principal areas of change that are being recommended. One is the elimination of an audit requirement that contractors provide audited financial statements for projects that exceed $250,000 in amount. And the second, and the more significant discussion we'll have tonight, are proposed changes to the way that you budget and account for project contingency funds. Let me address the first issue regarding audited financials and why the administration is recommending the elimination of that requirement. It's believed, and I think appropriately so, that requiring firms to provide audited financial statements for projects that exceed $250,000, given the relatively small value of those projects, is that it would provide a barrier to smaller businesses to provide work for the district because they typically will not have audited financial statements. So that's the reason for that suggested change. Turning to the more significant change, the administration is recommending changes to the manner in which the district both budgets and uses contingency funds. And I apologize, I don't want to talk past any board member as I discuss this subject, but I also don't want to be patronizing, and I will go through this graphic that will help discuss the various issues, but there are a variety of contingency funds, and currently under policy, the board must approve all change orders, which is a manner of expending contingency funds if they exceed $50,000. The proposed changes would provide for the superintendent to spend contingency funds, but in accordance with board-approved and predetermined contingency amounts. So the design of the policy is to strike a balance between allowing the administration to have the flexibility it needs to keep projects moving, because projects are moving and your board cycle is once a month, while still ensuring that the board has appropriate oversight of the contingency expenditures. So this proposal is also intended to take into account concerns that were raised by the outside auditor as part of its audit and review of your construction and design program. So if you look at this allocation of bond project budgets, and bear in mind that contingency is really the identified reserve of funds to be expended for unanticipated costs that arise in the life of a construction project. And I think Mr. Rice could tell you, in every construction project in common in the industry, you will have unexpected expenditures that you need to provide for. So if you look on the left-hand column of this allocation of bond project budgets, you're going to see all the various budget categories that make up the total project budget, starting with the design piece at the top in green, the construction piece in blue, and then a variety of miscellaneous budget categories, including site development, furnitures, fixtures, and equipment, and then a further catch-all category dealing with administration and other project costs. And then there's an overall project contingency, and those are unallocated budget costs that don't fall within any of the above categories, meaning they don't account for a design, the cost for the design contract, they don't fall within the lump-sum construction contract, they're not for site development, they're not for furniture, fixtures, and equipment, nor are they for other budgeted amounts that fall within the administrative or other project costs. So within the lump-sum construction contract, and this is where things get a little bit confusing, in the contract itself, it will have built-in owners and it will have built-in contractor contingency within the contract. But what we're asking as part of this revised policy is that you have design contingency dollars budgeted, you have construction contingency dollars budgeted, on top of and beyond those that are built into the construction contract, and then you have your unallocated project contingency. You may ask, and appropriately so, why would the board need to allocate a construction contingency if the construction contract already has some built-in owner and contractor contingency within it? Well, the owner and contractor contingency that's built within the contract is typically for smaller amounts and typically do not require change order because they do not expand the scope of the contract such that a change order is required. But the construction contingency is meant to handle larger amounts, and so it's to allow the superintendent to do that if need be without coming to the board to get approval for a particular change order that might be required. It's important to know that if the board agrees to this proposed change to the policy, that in all instances, the board will set every contingency amount. In all instances, all contingency expenditures will be reported to the board, and if you find yourself in the situation where you need to dig down into the last bucket, which is project contingency, and pull money from the project contingency, that that will also still require board approval. So we think that this strikes the best balance of ensuring that your projects are not bogged down because you have to await board approval for any particular contingency expenditure, but that you have placed controls through predetermined project contingency amounts that the administration has to function within. And so with that, I'll answer any questions that any of the board members might have.
Thank you, Mr. Morris. That's a very, well, it's a good graphic because it kind of separates things nicely and it clarifies the terms. Sometimes when we're in here talking, we throw away, throw out these terms, and it's hard to know which thing we're talking about, and to just say contingency obviously doesn't, it means nothing and it means about six different things. So, thank you for setting out all these definitions and clarifications. I think that's helpful. Do we have any questions on this policy? Mr. Rice?
Are we carrying an owner and contractor contingency in our CSP contracts?
Mr. Rice, right now, we only have a contract going with, for a CM at risk, and we have a, yes, sir, we're carrying an owner's contingency in that contract. The intention for going forward with the CSP contracts would be to absolutely have an owner's contingency.
In the contractor's contract?
Yes, sir.
Why would we do that? Why do we do that?
The owner's contingency within the CSP contract would be for small changes that the owner would seek that wouldn't require the necessity of a change order. If they're small and they're within the owner's contingency amount, then there would simply be a contingency authorization form that would be signed by the owner to permit the change.
Okay. What's the percentage of that? I mean, how do we arrive at that? Is it a percentage of the total contract?
That's yet to be determined by the board. The policy doesn't speak to those percentage amounts. It's an insightful question, of course, because given that you're going to have both a construction contingency and an owner's contract contingency, there will need to be a balance struck in an overall amount that the board thinks is appropriate.
Well, if we move forward with this, why do we need it? If we move forward with what you're talking about tonight, why would we need to include that in the competitive seal proposal contract?
I think that you want to have both levels of contingency: owner's contract contingency within the CSP contract, as well as an overall construction contingency, so that you have adequate ability to deal with both small changes and large changes without necessity of board approval, but with a cap to the overall contingency amount.
But I guess I understand what you're saying, but if we have a cap on the contingency allowance that we would allow the superintendent to expend, why would we need to carry that in the construction contract?
Well, and I don't think you would. You would only include a small, a relatively small amount of the contingency for construction within the CSP contract. I think, and perhaps you're alluding to this, if the amount of the contingency for owner contingency is embedded in the contract alone and not a set-aside budgeted amount, I can't understand how it would send the unintended signal to a contractor that there's just available money under the contract that could be expended. And so your owner contingency in the contract may be a relative small amount compared to the overall construction contingency.
And how does the contractor access those contingencies? What is the mechanism that allows him to use them?
So in all instances, whether it is the contractor contingency under the CSP contract or its owner contingency, whether in the contract or outside through the construction contingency, in all instances, there will be an approval form. If it's a formal change order, as you know, Mr. Rice, that will require the involvement of the architect and the owner and the contractor to sign off on the change order. If it's less than that, there will still be documented approval from the owner in, under policy, through the superintendent, through the execution of a contingency authorization form.
Well, I understand. I just, I guess I don't understand why we would have a contractor contingency included in the contract if we have an allowance that the, can be utilized for that. When it's approved, the architect and engineer have to be involved, and then, of course, Dr. Dupree or his designee would have to approve that before the contract can be amended. So I just, yes, I don't understand why we have to carry an allowance. I understand why we do it in a construction manager at risk contract, but not the CSP. But I don't want to take up a whole lot of time.
Well, I would like to respond directly to that question because I do think it's a valid question. I think arguably, it's more valuable to have the contingency built into the CSP because the contractor may not have the benefit of full CDs, may not have been involved in the design process like the CMR, such that frankly, there's some amount of mercy money that might be granted to the contractor as part of the CSP contingency. I think that the district could very reasonably, in a CMR contract, take a harder line, that there would not be any contractor contingency, because presumably, the contractor should have been involved in the design process and would have a better idea of what the costs are. But let me finally say, all those concerns, and they're valid concerns, and some of them speak to what is the appropriate amount of contingency. The amounts will still be within the board's discretion under policy and will have to be determined at a later time, either on a per-contract basis or on a global basis.
Well, I understand, Mr. Morris, but I would just like to comment that when the competitive seal proposal contract documents and specifications are completed, and we've obtained a permit and we're sending them out for bid, they should be complete. So I don't think they should have any mercy money. If they miss something, if it's an error or an omission, or if there is a hidden condition, or if we change the scope, then that's what the contingency is for. And so I don't think we should, and I think there is a limit to the amount that the construction contract can be changed by law. I think it's limited to 25% of the total value, so we just don't keep building something by executing a change order, although I don't think that we would come anywhere near that amount. So...
Well, and that mercy money can be set very low, or as you suggest, it can be none at all?
Zero.
Zero. Correct.
Can I ask, thank you, Mr. Rice. I have a question kind of related to what you were saying. What is the time between when the construction documents go to the bidders and the time that the contractors turn in their bids for review?
Well, I suspect it can depend on the project. I would presume, and I don't pretend to be an expert in this field, if I'm wrong about this, Max or Mr. Rice can correct me, but I would imagine that you would at least be at 80% of construction drawings, probably more typically north of 90% in construction drawings.
So, but what I'm...
No.
No?
If we have, we shouldn't be submitting anything for competitive seal proposal until the drawings are complete. For competitive seal proposal, the drawings are complete. We have to have a permit. The drawings are complete. CM at risk, which nobody in Houston knows how to use correctly, that's what the contractor's contingency is for, because we typically want to get a guaranteed maximum price at 60 to 65% of construction documents. So if you're going to get a guaranteed maximum price at 100% of construction documents, there's no reason to go competitive seal, or CM at risk. Anyway, I don't want to get all bogged down in this tonight. I just don't think we need to carry contractor's contingency in the CSP. That's all. Thank you.
And the only reason that, I was asking a different question than the one he answered, and that was because the time between the, when they get the construction documents and they have to turn in their bid, if that is a very short amount of time, then there's risk to them, and that's, I think, maybe where... is risk to them and that's, I think, maybe where, when that contractor contingency can be used in the way Mr. Morris is describing it.
No.
That's not accurate?
No. They can't use it. They, when we issue it for bid, what do they have, Mr. Cleaver, two or three weeks to turn in their bids?
It, it varies by project. Oscar can speak to that.
Yes, sir. By, by policy, we have to go ahead and advertise two consecutive weekends and then normally we give them about 25 days to get the bid in.
Well, anyway, so they turn in the bid and then when they're actually constructing it, if they find something, then they can bring it up at that time. And I didn't mean to get us off track, but actually, I think this is a good way to go. I, the only thing I'm objecting to is including contractor's contingency in the CSP.
Okay. Thank you. Do we have any other questions or comments on this policy? All right. Thank you, Mr. Morris. Thank you, everyone for bringing that to us. So now we'll move on to ED local. Which, Mrs. Martinez, can you refresh us, because we have a lot of binders all of a sudden, and could you help us with where we are, please?
Absolutely. ED local was presented to you first as a policy to consider for deletion or possible revision. We provided two options at that point. And policy ED local is the one that speaks to organization of instruction and it's outdated because it, it was in its current state, it reflects the teaming at middle school, which we no longer do. So when we first brought it forward to you, it was with option one to delete, option two to revise. What we're presenting for you this evening and will be recommending is for that revision to reflect our current instructional setting at the elementary level and at the middle school level and at the high school level. So that where we, should we make any changes in the future to the grade configuration or the, the structure at any of those levels, it would be covered in policy and we would bring that to the board as a recommendation.
Thank you. Do we have any questions on this one? So just for clarification, I, let me, correct me if I'm wrong here. If we brought our binder from December 14th, that is the same as this new binder that's at our place here, that says February 8th.
That is correct.
Okay. Okay, that's one less binder. And the ones we're talking about tonight specifically are in the January 19th binder, which is the one that Mrs. Tosan has.
That is accurate. Yes.
And all of those policies were also in our board book, if you do not have your binder.
Yes, and some of the ones in the board book is the most current version because some did change from the January 19th binder.
Correct. And this is an example of one that did change because we had an either/or and we, I sent in some comments and we ended up doing a set one. Okay. So that's where we are. So everybody's oriented now. So the next one is EFF local.
And there are no changes to that recommendation. It is recommended for deletion. It's outdated and the ability to contract is covered under CH legal.
All right. The next one is EHDA local. And this was a summer, one about the summer school. And, yeah, I see that. Good.
And a revision has been made to this one since the original binder and that's the inclusion about three paragraphs down of the reference to FD local.
Scroll the other way. Scroll the other way. Scroll the other way. Scroll the other way. There you go.
I'm sorry, FD legal.
FD legal.
It just says a record.
That, just that sentence was added there.
Yes, ma'am.
Because it referenced it. Any questions on that one? All right.
There were no changes to EI local from the presentation in January. It is recommended for revision to provide information regarding partial credit when a student earns a passing grade in only one semester of a two semester course.
All right. Do we have any questions on that one? All right. The next one is EIA local.
EIA local. It's being recommended for revision to address academic dishonesty and there was an additional change or revision made since last presented to you on page two of two in the second paragraph. The revision to the revision begins on the fourth line and includes the wording that is underlined on the screen for the sentence that states academic dishonesty includes, but is not limited to cheating or copying the work of another student, plagiarism, unauthorized access to electronic information, and, and so on. And that is to cover any sort of access to Google or outside electronic information in any way, texting, pictures, that sort of thing.
All right. I think we have a couple of, I have a couple of comments on this one. Does anybody else have anything? Mrs. Tosan, go ahead.
So my comment or question actually has to do with a portion that was not recommended for revision to the finality of grades portion. And this may not, this may be covered in other policy. I sent this question in earlier today. So this may be covered in other policy. I know that there are legal ramifications even to the language that I sent in, so I know that it's, it's probably, as I worded it, not the most appropriate way to put in. But what I would like to see is that portion says a student's grade issued by the teacher for a course and examination is final and may not be changed unless, and then we have some exceptions, the grade is arbitrary, erroneous, or not consistent with the district's grading policy. And I was thinking in the context of our students who are in special education and who have IEPs, I've had some personal experience with needing to change grades because of modification issues or accommodation issues, things that were not appropriately implemented. And so we needed to go back and re, revisit that or retake or retest or give, give another opportunity with the appropriate accommodations or modifications implemented. So I, and Mrs. James was saying earlier that perhaps it, it might be a good idea for us to maybe make some kind of philosophical statement in policy about special education that might, would cover this, but it was something that came to mind with this finality of grades issue because I've had experience with it personally. So I didn't know if there was a way to add that in there.
Thank you for that question. Kobe Willbanks is here and he will address that question for you.
Yes, thanks, Ms. Tosan. We received your question earlier today and we began to look at that. And we understand kind of where you're coming from, the idea that if something's very clearly placed in policy, that it a lot of times makes it easier for teachers to, to see that and kind of apply that. Kind of started our review on that. I'm not quite sure this is the best place. This language, I think, comes straight out of statute in a different place in the ed code, but I do think we're going to look, we're going to look to try and find how to best accommodate that and, and see where that, that best should apply.
Okay. I would appreciate that. I'd like to, yeah, I'd like to get some recommendations on that because I do think it's important. A, a lot of times, teachers and administrators, they follow policy and they look to policy for guidance and, you know, rightfully, I mean, they should. That's what they should be doing. So I think it would be a good idea for us to have something there for them to turn to in those situations when a grade might have to be changed because it didn't reflect something that was in a student's IEP. So I'd appreciate some recommendations on that. That's it. Thank you.
Okay. Great. I have a couple of comments. One is the very next paragraph there where it talks about report cards being, and being signed and being turned in and that goes on then progress reports, those being signed and being turned in. I know this is in our policy, but I'm not sure that this is happening nor do we really even have a mechanism for it. And then I went on to read the legal policy and it's in the legal policy, so we can't really delete it. But I wondered, but I wondered what plans we have in place for, or we're putting together for doing this, if someone would like to comment.
Thank you. Yes, that is accurate. And in the extensive review process, we had the same discussion and referred to legal policy as well and are working with our administrative regulations to ensure that that practice is followed. I believe, and Dr. Hill can, can correct or support this, that we are in the process of researching the best way to get that information back, possibly through our Skyward interface or our Skyward platform, and then in, in ways in which the elementary students can bring those report cards back as well. And that will be well communicated to our teachers at every level to begin that practice as soon as we have a consistent method for doing that at each of the levels.
So are we delivering these progress reports electronically?
At the secondary level, that is possible and it is possible to get an electronic signature. We have not been getting electronic signatures legally. We would have to print those out to keep them if we did that because you have to keep it on file. At the elementary level, I think we have better compliance because they have the weekly folders going back and forth. And unfortunately, sometimes our older students don't like to carry, hand carry hard copies back and forward and parents rely on our digital communication a little bit more because of that. And I have checked with Lisa Mercer and she's checked with Skyward and we can do an electronic signature. So we're working on that also.
Ms. Hanger?
I would just say from personal experience, my child, I, I get maybe half of his progress reports that are printed out that he is required to get them signed, but other than that, no. So it's not consistent across the, you know.
They come in the mail? They come in the mail?
No. Well, the, well, the, when it comes in the mail, he doesn't have to get it signed at all. What he gets is a printout periodically for a specific class that he's, that that particular teacher is requesting that I sign that particular progress report. But the progress report that's sent out in the mail is not-
But I think that's the one that's being referred to. Please clarify this, Mrs. Martinez or Mr. Willbanks. That's what's being referred to in this policy. Those ones, those that come in the mail.
So I think that, that might be some comprehension or understanding of what is actually being required to be signed because they're giving out a paper, you know, of that particular class. So I might get three or four pieces of paper, individual class papers that particular day, but then I still get the electron, the one that's sent out in the mail, that was not being sent out.
I have never received a progress report for signature in secondary, ever.
Well, that would show that we have some work to do, Ms. Tosan. And we will be working on that.
Okay. Right. And I'll also just point out on behalf of the students that it's kind of embarrassing if you get your mom to sign their pro, your progress report-
I thought it was required.
And then have to take it to a teacher or a principal who says, oh, I don't need that, or, and that's, that's, I can give you some examples of that also happens. So because there is a line on there for signature and parents do sign it and they send it back and the school doesn't collect it or rejects it. So on behalf of all of our secondary students who are trying to do the right thing, we appreciate you and the adults in your world will learn the, what the law is and I'm sure will work on compliance.
Absolutely.
Okay. I have another, actually, another question on, or comment on this. And I assume, the, I will not assume the obvious. I will say what I think should be assumed is the obvious. We have something in regulations that talks about grade reporting and progress reports and signatures and what staff is supposed to do with these progress reports once they're signed and brought back.
That is a part of this comprehensive review process. The, the work here then leads to the refinement, the review, the revision, refinement of our regulations.
Okay. That sounds good. All right. My next question is on the next page in the academic dishonesty section. So I think that's a good idea to add the electronic information in there. I wondered if we should, it's the next phrase, unauthorized communication during an examination and leave out the phrase between students. That was just an idea because it's a little more general and there could be unauthorized communication between other people. It also occurred to me that another thing that's very, quite common is taking a picture and sharing that with somebody else or telling somebody else about the exam at lunch or whatever, those types of things. And I don't think, that's not really referred to in this either. I don't know quite where it would fit. Cheating or copying the other, the work of another student. It doesn't quite, well, unauthorized use of electronic, no taking pictures and posting it. So unauthorized use of electronic information or access to electronic information, maybe that could be phrased a little bit differently because then it would cover some of those cases.
Perhaps unauthorized access and/or use of electronic information.
Mm-hmm.
I, I'm just curious. Maybe I don't understand the scenario. Why are they using those type of tools if they've got that kind of access to them? What kind of tool are we using that is giving them, is it talking about cell phones?
Yes, ma'am.
So why are cell phones being used in the classroom? So then my, my question is-
Because you can walk by with the phone.
Bring your own device.
Bring your own device. You can walk by with your phone, take a picture. As you walk by somebody's desk, you can, I'm telling you, it's all over the place.
If I may give you an example of recent event, so there's an app called Periscope and JoJo was taking a look at a sample video streaming and it so happened that it was a student streaming the answer to an Algebra II quiz to everybody, whoever just tuned into that.
But that's my point. So all these things can happen by, by using this phone.